And I would turn it right over to ACM Shorter to kick off the homelessness discussion.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Ed, and good morning, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. So we are here today to talk with and hear from Barb Poppy and her team, and to present for her to present on the Investing in Results Report, which explores the city's investments in homelessness services. We are also here with Stephanie Hayden, Director of Public Health, Rosie Trulove, Director of Neighborhood Housing and Community Development, and Bella Carmen, our interim Chief Homeless Strategy Officer. After Barb's presentation, Stephanie and Rosie will also provide brief remarks that highlight a homelessness program alignment with the report's recommendations. First, I wanted to give some background on engaging Barb Poppy and her team and commissioning the report. Amidst the many crises we are facing in the city, we remain committed to ending homelessness in our community. The importance of bringing in a national consultant was to ensure that the city is leveraging dollars spent on activities to address homelessness and to ensure projects and initiatives are coordinated to have the maximum impact possible. So the city engaged Barbara or Barb Poppy and Associates to, one, look at the city's investments and compare them to Austin's Action Plan to End Homelessness, to examine the strategic deployment of those investments and evaluate crisis response system needs and best practices, and, three, and finally, to provide policy recommendations for potential resource and grant management realignment. Barb's team started work, as you all know, in February. In March, her team came to Austin and conducted a three-day onsite consultation where they met with stakeholders, facilitated group dialogues, conducted focus groups with people with lived experience, and facilitated other meetings to explore how the homelessness service system can be improved. They explored opportunities for investment partnerships and collaborations, and visited key homeless assistance programs and services to better understand how our homeless response system works. In the subsequent months, Barb Poppy and her team examined the city's work on homelessness really through the lens of the COVID-19 pandemic. The public health crisis has emphasized the need to develop a coordinated, community-wide response to the public health crisis and recession. As a reminder, the report builds upon the Austin's Action Plan to End Homelessness, developed by ECHO and endorsed by the city. The report's recommendations and strategies will support the effective implementation of that plan and can guide refinements to the plan as needed. Today, Barb Poppy and Matt White are here to summarize her findings and recommendations. As you all know, Barb Poppy is nationally recognized as a leader in achieving data-driven solutions through collaborative processes. She served as the Executive Director of the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, and not only developed and launched the first-ever federal strategic plan to end homelessness, she also oversaw the implementation of the plan and execution of strategies that achieved significant measurable results. I'd like to welcome Barb Poppy and her team and turn the discussion over to her to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Chris. This is Matt White. I'm going to be leading off this morning. I believe Barb will be joining me and we'll be transitioning back and forth. I just wanted to say thanks to the mayor, to members of council, city staff, for the opportunity to share key findings and recommendations from the Investing for Results Report. As ACM Shorter mentioned, I'm Matt White. I'm with the consulting team of Barbara, Poppy, and Associates. I'm one of the primary authors. The report represents analysis of the homelessness system in Austin, and also a set of recommendations for adopting what we're calling a systems approach to end homelessness, and a corresponding investment strategy that, if adopted, will position Austin to achieve significant progress in ending homelessness. Barb and I are going to share presentation responsibilities. We'll be transitioning back and forth so you hear from both of us. We'll walk you through the approach we used for the analysis, what we learned. We'll discuss key findings and a set of recommendations. The recommendations are directly related to where City of Austin directs funding, so which particular strategies and specific activities, and how those investments are structured and managed. I believe there are a set of slides. I'm not sure if participants are able to follow along and see those slides. Are those visible to everyone? Should I just keep moving along?
The slides aren't up yet. Oh, here they are. Thank you. Never mind.
They're up now.
Perfect. Okay, if we can transition to the next slide, please. The data that we used for our analysis are derived from a review of all of the FY 2020 city contracts. Those contracts were directed to a homelessness programming or service activity. So we looked at the budgets, the contract scope, the target populations included in those contracts, and all of the eligible activities. We also spoke directly to stakeholders. This was, as ACM Shorter mentioned, this was before the shutdown due to COVID, but it also included city staff, homelessness assistance providers, and especially persons with lived experience of homelessness in Austin. And finally, we looked at your performance data. These are counts of persons who experience homelessness, and what services they use, and their outcomes, or the results of those service interactions. We can go to the next slide.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah.
They're one slide ahead of you. So if they would go back one slide, they skipped a couple on the front.
Okay.
I think Matt is now on slide three, for whoever's advancing the slides. Thank you.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. You should see a graphic that kind of looks like a house with a number of key elements. The foundation of the house is something called a Housing First Approach. This graphic illustrates the components of a systems approach, where all of these elements are working in concert to ensure that the homeless system in Austin is as effective and as impactful as it can possibly be. The foundation, as I said, is something that we're calling this Housing First Approach. It simply means that housing is a primary intervention that must be provided before a participant can safely and adequately address the other confounding issues that might be inhibiting their progress. The other elements that make up the house represent programmatic approaches and strategies and management techniques. All of them are dependent on housing itself as the basis for further supports and interventions. So I think Barb is now going to introduce herself and talk about the framework we use to inform our analysis and the structure of our report.
Great. Thank you, Matt. If we could advance to the next slide. Great. So recently, I published a series, A Policy Brief for Arnold Ventures, also known as the Laura and John Arnold Foundation, on unsheltered homelessness with my colleague, Dr. Steve Magdell. It's based on a review of the literature, nine site visits to communities that are making progress on one or more measures of addressing unsheltered homelessness. Out of that study, we concluded that four key components being addressed together were required to effectively address unsheltered homelessness. The first is the public piece that is about reducing inflow. It's really important to stop discharges into homelessness from jails, prisons, child welfare, foster care, and hospital and treatment centers, as well as addressing the loss of affordable rental housing. This is a responsibility of local governments, and in your case, that's the City of Austin in partnership with Travis County. The second two puzzle pieces relate to the homelessness assistance system. These are two primary roles: crisis response, which is meeting basic needs, and housing stabilization, which is helping people exit homelessness quickly to stable housing. This work in your community is co-led by ECHO and the City of Austin in partnership with providers of outreach, shelter, and housing, as well as healthcare and behavioral health services. The fourth puzzle piece is public space management. This is reducing inflow. Like reducing inflow, this is the purview of local government, the City of Austin primarily, with other governmental entities like the Department of Transportation that controls the right-of-ways. To reduce overall expenditures for the response to homelessness in the long term, communities need to increase investment in housing stabilization sufficient to facilitate efficient and effective use of crisis response. That means no bottlenecks are overflowing into the streets by reducing inflows through inappropriate discharges and the loss of housing, combined with inclusive, non-punitive public space management. An over-investment in public space management, those things like sweeps, encampments, clearance, and other harmful actions against homeless people, will be detrimental toward overall progress to reduce unsheltered homelessness. Next slide. Inclusive public space management is the best approach to dealing with public concerns about people experiencing homelessness who are forced to live in public spaces due to inadequate housing options and emergency shelter capacity. There's a strong body of literature that punitive approaches, those move-along orders, arrests, and citations, incarceration for the acts of meeting human needs like sleeping and resting, with no or limited access to basic hygiene and sanitation, are not only ineffective, they actually make it more difficult to solve for homelessness. This graphic summarizes the evidence about the harm caused by the criminalization of homelessness. Inclusive public space management instead helps make public spaces more usable for everyone through regular trash pickup, providing sanitation, and supporting tidy outdoor living through the safe storage, safe needle disposal, et cetera. Inclusive public space management also leverages service providers, rather than the police, as first responders to public complaints about homeless people. Next slide. One key headline for our report is that unsheltered homelessness, the most visible form of homelessness, is rising dramatically in Austin. We urge the city to adopt a more humane and person-centered approaches that rely not on punitive enforcement actions, but instead invest strategically in expanded crisis response and more housing options to achieve the objectives that your community is searching for. Back to you, Matt.
Thanks, Barb. Next slide, please. This slide illustrates the trends in counts of point-in-time homelessness over time. It reveals a dramatic increase in unsheltered homelessness among single adults. While trends for other populations have remained stable or decreased, the number of single adults who experience homelessness and do not have safe, adequate shelter has doubled in the past five years. So not only is unsheltered homelessness increasing, while other subpopulations are not, unsheltered homelessness represents by far the largest portion of all people who experience homelessness in Austin. Next slide, please. When we look at exit destinations, this is where people go when they leave the homelessness system, we see pretty dramatic differences among adults, families, and youth. The majority of families, which are represented by the yellow bar, exit to permanent housing. Most youth, the red bar, return to family and friends as a temporary placement. Single adults, on the other hand, the purpleish bar, simply leave, and we don't know where they go. Their exit destination is unknown. Austin needs to do a much better job of engaging single adults and ensuring that adults have access to permanent housing strategies and placements to improve their exit out of homelessness. Let's look at the next slide, where we look at investments, city investments. Here, we're seeing the existing or the current FY 2020 investments by funding source. The vast majority of funding that's administered by city departments represents city general funds. In FY 2020, the amount was higher than previous years and likely much higher in subsequent years due to a relatively large amount of one-time investments during the FY 2020 period. These investments will not be recurring in subsequent funding cycles. For every dollar the city administers, contracted providers are able to bring in at least an equal amount of leveraging. So this is match that they bring to the table. This essentially doubles the impact of city investments. How are these investments distributed? Let's look at the next slide. We've graphed investments by the type of activity and made a distinction between city dollars and matched dollars. The largest amount, dollar amount, of city investments are directed to housing supports. These investments represent rental assistance and services for households moving into permanent housing. The largest total amount, including Project Match, is directed to support services, and these are typically staffing costs associated with case management, treatment services, counseling, et cetera. All right, Barb.
Great. Thank you. Next slide. So another headline was the lack of clarity about who is responsible for managing the response to homelessness in Austin. While ECHO oversees a portion of the housing stabilization response delegated to them by the continuum of care, a far greater share of resources is managed by the City of Austin. From the perspective of providers, community leaders, and even staff, no one entity was responsible for comprehensively managing, coordinating, or tracking the response to homelessness. Next slide. The left side of this graphic is how homelessness is currently being managed: a bowl of spaghetti without clear accountabilities. We recommend a more organized and integrated future that takes each of the puzzle pieces: reducing inflow, crisis response, housing stabilization, and inclusive public space management, organizing them by robust system planning with joint implementation teams that leverage the data tools of Coordinated Entry and Homelessness Management Information System, or HMIS. The updated response must be disciplined in the execution of strategies and be invested sufficiently to scale an effective response to reduce unsheltered homelessness. Next slide. The Investing for Results Report lays out a blueprint for the City of Austin. We focus our recommendations in five key areas. First, adopt a systems approach to replace the current fragmented and often siloed response. Second, take leadership to reduce inflow. Without strong deliberate action by the City of Austin, the number of people who become homeless and unsheltered each month will continue to rise. Next, invest at scale and align with best practices to improve the current crisis response. Dramatically increase investment in housing options, especially a pipeline for permanent supportive housing that integrates capital with operations and services funding. And finally, enhance your public space management activities, and don't further criminalize homelessness. Back to you, Matt.
All right. On the next slide, we translate those recommendations into a set of costs, at least for the current period. All of these recommendations are predicated on the fact that the city is the largest investor in homelessness services and housing. Again, remember that the FY 2020 budget had a significant amount of one-time funding, mostly directed to acquisition and one-time rehab projects. But even without that bump of 2020 funding, City of Austin dollars are more than double the federal resources provided by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So this suggests that the city has a significant role to play in defining a system-wide strategy for all investments, but also that investment decisions need to be coordinated and integrated for the community to achieve the desired impact of reducing and ending homelessness. So let's look at some of these recommendations in more detail. On the next slide, please. Our first recommendation is for the City of Austin to adopt a unifying system strategy for homeless system planning, management, and investments. Some of the elements of that unifying strategy are illustrated on the slide here. So we'll talk about each of these in just a moment. A unifying strategy recognizes all of these elements and harnesses their collective impact to achieve your goals. So, for example, if the city and the broader community decided to end unsheltered homelessness or street homelessness, which is absolutely possible, but it would only be possible if all of these elements are present and working in concert towards achieving that particular goal. So let's look at each of these elements in more detail. Next slide.
To be successful, the City of Austin must strengthen your system management by clarifying roles and stakeholder partnerships to ensure all critical partners are working in a concerted effort towards aligned system goals and objectives. First, it's really important to identify and empower a high-level strategic leader within the city to coordinate and manage homeless strategy across all City of Austin departments. That position must be empowered to make COA investment decisions that align with your funding and system goals and objectives. It's also important to partner with ECHO to empower and strengthen their organization to serve as a system manager for crisis response and housing stabilization, inclusive of HMIS, coordinated entry, system planning, service coordination, establishing practice standards, driving system coordination with data-informed analysis. And finally, it is important to establish actionable items with an updated Austin Action Plan, making that document come to life through key strategies and implementation in a unified way.
We're beginning to lose the sound there.
Whoops.
Great. To be successful, the City of Austin must... Are we back?
Yes.
To be successful, the City of Austin must expand the supply of deeply affordable rental housing, aggressively work with other public systems to reduce inappropriate discharges into homelessness, and work with ECHO to enhance and update their capacity to lead the homelessness response system, both crisis response and housing stabilization. The city will also need to rely on ECHO to support your grant-making processes and provide performance management reporting. A strong City-ECHO partnership supported by engaged and trusted staff expertise is essential. The City-ECHO partnership being built today to respond to COVID is a platform that can be enhanced and should be extended for overall system management. Next slide.
Our third recommendation under the systems approach is to adopt a results-oriented contract management approach. Contracts need to be managed with high-quality and timely data that show performance results. Contractors will be encouraged to demonstrate strong performance because future funding or increases in funding are a direct result of the positive impact they're able to show. Many of the refinements to contracting are administrative, but they can have a significant impact if the contracting process, including procurement, is directly aligned with an overall system strategy. So you're still investing in individual programs and projects, but only when those projects demonstrate results, and only when they contribute to achieving system-wide goals. Next slide.
As you can see from this graphic, Austin, like so many other American cities, is racially inequitable in who experiences homelessness. Black households are more likely to endure poverty, but even more likely to endure homelessness. Thirty-eight percent of homeless people are black compared to being only eight percent of the general population. The City of Austin should shift to data-informed decision-making processes for strategy development, resource allocation, and other strategies to address homelessness. And this must include using a racial equity lens to shift practice, policy, and funding decisions to foster greater diversity, equity, and inclusion in all of that work. Next slide.
This represents recommendation number five about reducing inflow. It's referencing back to that puzzle graphic that Barb first introduced at the beginning. The responsibility for reducing inflow falls primarily to public systems that are large contributors to homelessness. These are public systems such as criminal justice, but also includes healthcare and behavioral health, child welfare, other public housing. With strong data to understand where people are coming from immediately prior to homelessness, and the circumstances and conditions that are contributing to their housing instability, we can make significant reductions in the number of people who find themselves in crisis and then ultimately literally homeless. Data can help us be much more focused and targeted in directing prevention resources only to those households most likely to experience literal homelessness. The next recommendation is about enhancing the crisis response system. I think Barb is going to cover that.
Next slide. So we call for an enhanced system-wide outreach and diversion strategy to explore engagement and problem-solving opportunities for all people who need crisis assistance at all points and engagement within your system. This includes adopting and implementing housing-first, trauma-informed practices and policies across the system, as well as all providers. We urge you to create a centralized, flexible fund to support diversion and problem-solving, and tie your existing street outreach efforts to a more unified strategy for unsheltered persons and encampments. Shifting your programming to meet people where they are, consistent with a harm reduction policy, is essential. We are suggesting that you require all funded programs adopt low-barrier approaches involving minimizing the requirements placed on people who wish to utilize services, shelter, or housing. Next slide. Next slide. We strongly... That's great. We strongly recommend the city expand crisis options for single adults through additional investment to ensure smaller-scale shelters with evidence-based, trauma-informed, client-centered, and housing-focused services. There are many ways that you could accomplish this. First, you could leverage your motel conversion strategy to identify additional opportunities for low-barrier bridge housing units dispersed through the city with strong housing-focused programming. You could focus on deconcentrating crisis services at the intersection of Salvation Army Arch and the Caritas location. The current impact is destabilizing, oftentimes unsafe, and trauma-inducing for the very people who are trying to access these important services. And then finally, continue your capacity-building efforts at the arch to ensure staff and shelter programming is, again, trauma-informed, client-centered, and housing-focused, and then expand this effort to all of the other emergency shelters. Next slide.
The next component of our framework for addressing homelessness is an expansion of the housing stabilization infrastructure. This includes the rehousing strategies that support families and individuals to move out of homelessness and into stable, permanent housing. By applying a Housing First approach to this recommendation, Austin will be able to target and successfully house the most vulnerable households who have the most barriers by simply providing housing first without preconditions. Once in stable housing, families and individuals are then able to address other confounding factors as a secondary intervention. The Investing for Results Report recommends substantial expansion to rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing for single adults, and more modest expansion of those resources for families. Next slide.
Unfortunately, when there's not adequate access to safe shelter or housing, people who are unhoused have few options other than living in public spaces. And so while you are working to scale up the response for crisis and housing stabilization, it's still important to be attentive to the needs of people who are living it's still important to be attentive to the needs of people who are living unsheltered. You need to ensure their health and well-being despite the hazards that are associated with living unsheltered on your streets and in other public spaces. The city of Austin should continue undertaking a proactive and inclusive approach to public space management and continue to advance non-punitive policies. Things that you can do to further enhance public space management is to make things more usable and healthier for everyone. This includes safe and accessible storage for personal belongings both during the day and on an ongoing basis, providing for regular trash pickup at all areas where people are living unsheltered, increasing access to drinking water and nutritious food, much the way you've been doing under the COVID crisis, expanding access to public restrooms and showers or other hygiene and safety options, and always ensuring safe needle disposal and needle exchange. A strategy effective in some communities is hiring people with lived experience as peer support to help engage and build trust with people living unsheltered. And finally, it's important that you have an agreed-upon cross-departmental protocol for addressing encampments that pose a serious and significant danger to those who are unsheltered. Next slide.
The Investing for Results Report identifies system expansion needs to achieve the goals of homelessness being rare, brief, and nonrecurring. We identified a set of concrete recommendations for the coming two years as a down payment on that future system. The recommendations for system expansion in the coming two years call for nearly $20 million in additional funding for crisis response and housing stabilization for single adults and youth, and $2.3 million in additional resources to address the needs of families. Now let's break that down and take a look at a more granular level. Next slide. This slide identifies the system expansion recommendations for single adults and youth. You can see the recommendations broken down by component type on the left: prevention, diversion, shelter, transitional, rapid rehousing, and PSH. Then it includes the average per unit or per person served cost, followed by the number of additional service lots for units that are needed to achieve this optimal system or work towards an optimal system, and then finally, a total cost. If investments were made at this scale, city of Austin would have a system-wide diversion protocol in place, one of the most cost-effective strategies for reducing homelessness, reducing the length of time of homelessness, and speeding people's access back to stable housing. The investment recommendations for this period call for 200 additional slots of rapid rehousing and 500 new units of permanent supportive housing or PSH, again for single adults and youth. Let's look at the same considerations for families now. Next slide. Investment recommendations for families are a bit more modest. Austin already has made substantial progress in building out and funding a system of resources and housing supports for families that's much closer to the scale needed to address all the needs for family homelessness. Here, we're calling for 180 slots of diversion, that's the full system build-out of diversion, 50 slots of rapid rehousing, and 10 additional units of PSH for families. Next slide.
So as we close out our part of the presentation, we want to thank the city of Austin, especially Chris and Nuria and Vella, as well as all of the other staff who work so hard for their interest, commitment, and passion to reduce and end the misery associated with homelessness. We are confident that by investing for results and acting with urgency and intention on the recommendations we've prevented, you can bend the curve toward a more equitable and just city where homelessness becomes a rare, brief, and nonrecurring experience for your most vulnerable neighbors. At this time, I am really excited to turn this presentation over to my colleague, Matthew Doherty. Matthew is wanting me to make sure that he was moved out of the attendee slot into the panelists so he can speak. Matthew has been working in partnership with us on the COVID response as well as also moving forward some important parts of the recommendations to address our report and the next steps with that. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Matthew and suggest that if you advance to the next slide, we'll move on to Matthew's presentation.
Great. Thank you, Barb, and I think I'm off mute and in the room officially, so I appreciate the help with that. Talk quickly about some of the work ahead. Quick introductions to everybody again, I have another chance to talk with you about this work. As Barb indicated, I'm another consultant working with the city, working under a separate contract, but working in very close collaboration with Barb and Matt, both on this report and thinking through the steps to help move these recommendations forward. The focus of my work under my contract has been a little bit different than Barb and Matt really focus more on some helping set short-term and longer-term goals and defining roles, especially between the city and ECHO and some of the partners, to move work forward. But as we've talked about in past discussions, my focus necessarily shifted to doing that work in the context of the COVID-19 response and working very closely with the city, with ECHO, with other partners to set short-term activities and strategies to define roles, but really in the context primarily of responding to the crisis of COVID-19 and its potential impact on people experiencing homelessness. And then have been working in support of Barb and Matt and thinking through this report and its findings and recommendations. And now I'm going to continue to sustain some of my focus on COVID-19 and supporting that work, but am being able to start to shift to working more on focusing on the creation and facilitation of this public-private partnership task force. And that's going to be a primary focus of my work for the next couple of months, is to get this task force moving forward and starting to tackle some of the work ahead. And this task force is one of the key ways that recommendations within the Investing for Results Report will get carried forward. So we call it the Public Private Partnership Task Force to End Homelessness, a very long name, shorthand to the P3 or the P3 Homelessness Task Force. Next slide, please. This task force is convened jointly by the city of Austin and by ECHO, and it's really intended as a demonstration of shared leadership and responsibility for the system response that Barb and Matt described and that really are in central roles for both the city and ECHO in collaborating on leading a systems approach to preventing and ending homelessness in Austin. The current membership includes people from the Downtown Austin Alliance and many of the major homelessness-focused nonprofit agencies in the community. The membership might get built out over time. We're going to go through a process with these members first, and then as we really zero in on some of the specific areas of focus and targets, we'll start to identify what other members need to join this P3 effort in order to pursue those goals and targets together. So the initial members will be working to establish their goals and targets and their strategies, and then again, building out that membership. We have a plan in place to meet weekly, starting tomorrow and through the end of September into early October, really move forward quickly on defining the role for this P3 group and to develop its goals, its targets, and its strategies. Next slide, please. I do want to be clear that this P3 task force is intended to augment existing structures and decision processes and to bring some shared responsibility, shared decision-making around key elements of this work, but it's not intended to replace all of the existing structures and decision processes, and it's not intended to be responsible for implementing the entire response to homelessness or for the details of the operation across the entire system. So there are some of the recommendations within the report that you just heard more about and within the Austin Action Plan that this group can drive forward, but there's many other structures in place that would be responsible for moving other recommendations and other strategies forward as well. But it really does rest in a shared recognition that solutions are going to require a mobilization across both the public and the private sector and start to expand the reach and involvement of other systems, other organizations, or other programs who have critical roles to play across the response and that this group can help mobilize that broader response. Next slide, please. So then the next steps for this group are to collaboratively set short-term and longer-term goals and targets across the full array of what Barb described in terms of the response to unsheltered homelessness. So goals related to reducing inflow, to crisis response, housing stabilization, and public space management. I would say the primary focus for this group is to find ways to scale up the opportunities and the interventions that are available across the system and to look for ways to bring more resources and more scale in order to better address the scale of need that's clearly demonstrated within your data and what you see within your... Another element of this group's work will be to support the formation of a funder's collaborative of public and private partners to collectively invest for results and to use some of the strategies and recommendations within this report, within a more coordinated and shared investment strategies across that collaborative. The group will be working to find ways to strengthen data and to use data more strategically within the response to homelessness. And then also will be supporting the development of an implementation plan for Austin's Action Plan to End Homelessness. And so again, I want to hear emphasize that the P3 group does not become the group responsible for every element of the response, but is adding and augmenting key strategic elements within that work and developing its own plan and area of focus, and then informing the overarching plan that needs to get implemented across a wider array of programs and systems. So we are beginning that series of weekly meetings now. We've been meeting every few weeks over the last several months. They've been deeply ingrained in understanding this report and its findings and recommendations. And we've mapped out a process between now and the end of October to move forward toward all of these next steps and to be able to report milestones along the way. The group will be reviewing that plan with me tomorrow and hopefully adopting that plan and be able to move very quickly into the next stages of this work of clear public targets, the kinds of scale that's needed, and strategies that they will be advancing to pursue those targets. So thank you very much for your time, appreciate the opportunity, and I'll be a part of the team that's able to answer questions as we get to that part of the agenda.
All right, perfect. Matthew, thank you. I just really want to take a moment to thank Barb, to thank Matt White, and to thank Matthew Doherty for the presentation. They're going to stay on the line. We are doing well on time, I think, and would like for them to sort of stay on the line for questions and answers. What I'd like to do is sort of pull up two slides to sort of transition us to the FY21 proposed budget and then turn it over to Stephanie and Rosie to provide some comments and then open it up for questions and answers, if that's okay.
That sounds good.
So if you don't mind, I think, Daniel, if you'll pull up those... Really, it's just two budget slides. All right, perfect. So Mayor and Council, you all just heard from Barb and the team highlighted four components, really puzzle pieces to address unsheltered homelessness, a reducing inflow, crisis response, housing stabilization, and public space management. What I'll say is that we, as a city, have used different vocabulary to talk about and frame our proposed budgets. We have historically highlighted the following service areas: housing displacement prevention, crisis mitigation, and reempowerment. On this first slide, what you'll see is essentially from FY17 to present with the far-right Barb being the proposed FY21 budget, what our investments have been in those three sort of core service areas as we have defined it and framed it in the past and as we framed it in this year's budget. To advance to the next slide, Daniel. And so what you see in this budget, again, just to make sure that there's some connection to what you just heard from our consultant team and read in their final report and what you see in the proposed budget, what you see here is the four service areas or core puzzle pieces, if you will, broken out by our budget over that same time period, from FY17 through to the proposed FY21 budget. And underneath, some examples, if you will, of the programming associated with each of those. Again, we thought that was very important to do to make sure that there was some, again, connection to what you see in the proposed budget and what you've just heard from the consultant team. What I'd like to do now is really pass it off to Director Hayton and Director Trulove. Maybe we'll start with Director Hayton to get some and highlight some comments, if you will, from the APH budget, and then we'll go right into Director Trulove. Stephanie?
Good morning. Stephanie Hayton, Director of Austin Public Health. Thank you, Chris Shorter, Mayor and Council. Thank you to the consultants. The FY21 has an annual budget of $23.5 million. And this is a combination of, and this is for homelessness. These are local and federal funding sources. Within those areas with crisis mitigation, there's $2.7 million, which includes things such as emergency shelter and homeless prevention services. Within the housing displacement prevention, there's $7.1 million, and that includes things that most of us are familiar with: case management, rapid rehousing, and financial assistance. And then the reemployment area, $5.5 million, which includes our permanent supportive housing, our outreach, our navigation services. It includes our homeless services division, our planning contracts such as with ECHO and with the consultants. During the COVID-19 response with Cares funding, the department requested $14.5 million to be budgeted to cover the lease, the food, laundry, security, and behavioral health services. So currently, we have four protective lodges that are housing 300 guests. We are in the process to activate the fifth lodge as a part of our emergency response and infection control strategy. And 17 people have exited from the pro lodges to permanent housing today. As individuals are there in those protective lodges, that is our goal, and we are working collaboratively with the Downtown Austin Community Court, Front Steps, Salvation Armies, Communities for Recovery and Integral Care are providing housing-focused case management and supportive services. That concludes my process. I will turn over to Director Rosie Trulove. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good morning. Just want to confirm that everyone can hear me. Yes, okay, good. So I wanted to talk about the neighborhood housing and commute... Well, it's really the Housing and Planning Department's budget and the programming that we're going to provide in support of homelessness prevention in four different categories. Tenant-based rental assistance, we have... We will continue with home-funded, federal home-funded contracts in the amount of about $1.1 million for tenant-based rental assistance through HACA. We have about $300,000 estimated funding that we anticipate will be received in the downtown density bonus program that will be used for low-barrier permanent supportive housing. And we have about $1 million programmed from CDBG COVID response for homeless assistance to prevent, prepare for, and mitigate the economic effects of coronavirus. These funds will be programmed in direct response to coronavirus relief and in the broader context of the city's homeless strategy. We also have through... We anticipate, or the budget has $7.7 million new transfer in to the Housing Trust Fund. And of that $7.7 million, we are dedicating or committing $3.6 million to a local housing voucher program. This will leverage other community housing voucher programs. We're waiting lists are several years long, so we're looking forward to implementing that. So we're looking forward to implementing that new program. In our rental housing development assistance program, we have twenty-two point five million dollars for rental housing development assistance. There's approximately a one hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar H Austin Housing Finance Corporation subsidy per PSH permanent supportive housing unit. So it's a much deeper subsidy than what we typically see for rental housing development assistance. And then we, but we still have our permanent supportive housing goal for fiscal year twenty-one of a hundred permanent supportive housing units annually as set forth in the blueprint. And we are on track to meet that for fiscal year twenty. We're continuing to advance the motel hotel conversion strategy. We are setting aside thirty million dollars of the hundred million dollars in land acquisition from the two thousand eighteen Affordable Housing Bond. That will be dedicated to motel conversion, to acquiring motels and transitioning them into permanent supportive housing. We have achieved right now through acquisition of, in fiscal year twenty, we spent community development block grants and achieved the, which have resulted in the acquisition and renovation underway of the roadway end. But we're continuing to move forward on other acquisitions as will be briefed in executive sessions from the real estate department or the opposite real estate services, rather. I did want to mention that we had a request for qualification, solicitation for operating of these facilities. That process has been initiated and is closed. And there were not any, that solicitation process did not lead to an award of any contracts. We received one response to that solicitation and it was not responsive. So we couldn't review or award any contract out of that. So we are in a position now where we're able to move to contract directly with folks. And as we move forward with future motel acquisitions, we'll be having conversations with providers to potentially have somebody in mind as we're acquiring the property so that we don't have any properties that we acquire without a management and operation plan for that particular property. And I think at that point, we would turn it back to either ACM Shorter or open it up for questions.
Fantastic. Director Trulove and Director Hayden, thank you very much. And yes, I would love to kind of be available to answer any questions.
So I'm going to turn it over here to the Mayor Pro Tem as we discussed earlier, because I have a quick phone call that I need to make. I think this is absolutely wonderful presentation. I love that we're moving forward on this. This is a, as before we got to the virus, it was the number one priority is to be set as a, as a city. I think the community wants to know that we have a plan and a way forward. My regret at this moment is that with everything else that we're going to be discussing today, this focus and this direction may not get the attention that it deserves. I love that we're putting all these, that we're organizing everybody. I think the recommendations are very strong and solid. And I'd like to be part of helping to move those forward. I would like to see us accelerate our work with respect to the permanent supportive housing options as we were talking about doing just before the virus hit. So we can make sure that we have those facilities in place in all parts of our city. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to turn it over to you and I'll be back as quickly as I can.
Okay. I see Kishan, Kasar, and Harper Madison. So Kishan, Kishan?
I'd like to, thank you all very much. I think this is, this is helpful. So could we go back to the slide that is the one on with the recommendations for the single adults? Just a few questions about that one. You don't, you don't, I don't think you need to bring it up unless others want to see it. But I'd like to, first, I just want to confirm that this is, these are recommended investments in addition to what we have in our proposed budget. So if someone can confirm that for me, then I have just a few questions about them.
Daniel, if you wanted to pull the slides up, this is the deck that Barb, Opie, and her team presenting. And I don't remember, maybe Barb or Matt White could help with the exact slide.
It's slide. Okay.
Slide what? Sorry?
Twenty-six. Okay, so my first question about it is that the, this estimated nineteen point nine million for adults and single adults and youth. ACM Shorter, can you just confirm for me that this is over and above what we have in our current budget?
Actually, I'm not sure if this is, I can't confirm that for sure. There are some investments that are being made and I wouldn't say that this is one hundred percent over and above.
The reason I'm asking that is because we don't have any new dollars, if I'm understanding correctly. There's no new dollars in the proposed budget for homelessness. So that's why I'm reading this as things that we're not, you know, that this is a future, future investment. So I'm going to assume it is and point to where we're putting any of these new dollars. So, so let me just ask a question or two then. So this is for our consultants. So when coming up with this budget, is this designed to be that, that will, it's tied back to getting us to a place where we have effectively zero homelessness for single adults? Because it says modest system expansion. I'm wanting to know what we're, what this is tied back to in terms of what we would accomplish with this.
So, Matthew, you want to jump in?
Yeah, the report includes recommendations for achieving what we're calling an optimal system where homelessness is rare, brief, and non-recurring. And in that optimal system, there are substantial investments needed to achieve that status, that optimal status of rare, brief, and non-recurring. The slide represents a investment, a sort of down payment on that future status, which would be additional investments in the next two years that would bring your system closer to that, that, that sort of equilibrium of homelessness being rare, brief, and non-recurring. So these are additional investments on top of what is currently in your budget.
Okay, so the report may tell me the details about how much closer this gets us to effective zero?
Yes.
Okay. And just roughly speaking, I mean, I'll go dig into the report, but is it halfway there, halfway there, third way there? Can you give me sort of a rough idea?
We were intentional about identifying, even though they're modest, we recognize that they're a substantial dollar amount. But this represents investments distributed across these program types that will afford you the greatest impact for these kinds of investments. So I don't know if I could quantify in terms of halfway there or quarter way there. It's the most impactful way. If you're going to make additional investments, our recommendations are that these are the particular activities where you should direct those, those resources.
Okay, I'll ask one more question and then turn it over to others. So then, so the diversion line that is in about a thousand per person, is this, I want to understand more what this is based on because I'm also intrigued about the recommendation for reducing inflow. And particularly, I'm under the impression, and I could be totally wrong about this, that we don't have a concerted effort to flow from hospital discharges, jail discharges, and other kinds of institutions that are in some ways, and it's sometimes discharging back to the street. So is this diversion related to reducing that inflow or is?
Yes, that's, that would be one component of it. Diversion as a strategy refers to the engagement of households at the point at which they're seeking assistance. And it could include engaging with your public systems, hospitals, criminal justice, because people are being discharged into homelessness. Diversion could also include the kinds of assessments and intake protocols at the point at which people are seeking shelter or encountered on the street. And, and through some problem-solving assistance and some modest financial assistance, reconnect people back to safe, appropriate housing placements without having prolonged shelter stays. So that's what, when we're calling this diversion, includes both those interactions with public systems that are contributing to homelessness, but also problem-solving conversations with people who might be just, you know, through the economic impacts of COVID, finding themselves at a shelter door, asking for help.
Okay, well then, I'd like to have more conversations later about the strategies related to the, to reducing the inflow, particularly from our other public institutions. It strikes me that that might not be as high-dollar an investment. That's one thing. And then the other thing is I would really like to see us make some progress towards this nineteen point nine million now and not wait till next year. So Mayor Pro Tem, that if there's time later, then I have a few more questions, but I'll turn it back to others right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kasar?
Actually, my question is on the same slide. And my question goes to leveraging. So y'all presented at the beginning that the social service agencies tend to bring a dollar for every dollar we put in. And so if we put in, for example, on permanent supportive housing, fourteen and a half million of public investment, then you're saying the, those nonprofits would bring forward additional funding? Or are you saying that we should bring forward seven and a half and they can bring forward the other seven and a half? Does that make sense? Does solving the problem require fourteen, five PSH money publicly so that they can bring the rest or not?
That is a great question. And if I could jump in here, just want to emphasize on this chart, we talked about annual recurring costs, not just one-time costs. And this is specifically the cost for operation and services in permanent supportive housing. It does not include the capital investment costs for acquiring the land, building, and all of those pieces to it. And that's the place where we're believing you may be able to get some leverage from the private sector to be a part of that capital development. Nationally speaking, I can say that permanent supportive housing usually does not leverage private philanthropic dollars for operations and services costs on an ongoing basis. Typically, those are initial launch, but not an ongoing process. What other communities have done is they've been able to access public funding through their housing authorities, their Medicaid agencies, and some other funding streams. But there also needs to be the strong local investment. And it varies by the type of state that you're located in as to whether there's a strong state investment through Medicaid or through housing vouchers and others to make this happen. So I would not expect you would leverage private sector dollars for this to that same amount, but you should be partnering with public, with agencies that can leverage other public funds through Medicaid or behavioral health services or healthcare. So you can public, you can leverage those other public dollars and partnerships. But you need to, it is not like emergency shelters, which do tend to get a fair amount of just private philanthropic dollars through, you know, through public relief campaigns, et cetera. So it's a different type of leverage.
And we expect that this P three partnership might be able to make up work on some of this O and M or really we're looking at that for, on the, on the capital side? I guess what I'm trying to really nail down, and it's, I'm fine with either answer. I just want to know what the goal is. Is it fourteen, five in public recurring dollars that we are trying to get to between this budget and next budget? Or is it some portion of that fourteen, five is public recurring dollars and some portion is brought forward by social service agencies or by this funders collaborative?
Our recommendation as the consulting team is to have an increased City of Austin investment and be sure that you start the process of having an integrated pipeline that brings together capital, operations, and services and those other dollars. As Matt said, this only gets you kind of the down payment on the pipeline. So anything that you can bring to the table and you leverage, and if you integrate it into a pipeline model, I think you'll have greater successes because that's what we've seen happen in other communities. I think you're at the precipice of being able to do that. But it is, it is really important to be strong investors in this work.
Great, thank you. Well, my last comment then is, you know, I know many of us have been posting amendments to the budget. What I posted last night gets us about halfway there on this permanent supportive housing goal of this year's budget. And of course, then we would have to be looking for that other half, either to leverage or to work out in the next budget, since this is kind of a two-budget plan. But I feel pretty firmly committed to at least getting, at least getting half of that PSH number done, given just what an urgent need we keep hearing that is this August.
And if I might jump in?
How to get there, but I think what I laid out gets you about seven. Sure.
And Mayor Pro Tem, if I might jump in, just to, just to reiterate what the role that the Affordable Housing Bonds can play is to help cover the gap on capital. So again, the Affordable Housing Bonds can't be utilized for any of the services that might be necessary. But we do see a role there for us to help incentivize the creation through capital investment. And we will continue to work with the state to advocate for changes to TDAHCA's Qualified Allocation Plan so that we can see more and realize more effective tax credit projects to help in its nature as well.
And this fourteen, five is the O and M that we can't pay for through housing bonds? And so we need to get some, it would be great if we could get even closer to fourteen, five, this budget, on top of it. And, and I'm supportive of us getting as close as we can. And just noting that what we put out there gets you around seven, gets you about halfway.
I'll also add, if I can, just in terms of the conversation we're having around the additional investments over the next two years, just that in the recommendations and certainly how we are analyzing our system and the contracts associated with services, that there are certainly, given the very large investment the city continues to make in homelessness, there are certainly opportunities, we believe, to reallocate and better leverage the funding that is already made available to homeless services. So I wanted to make sure I made the point that, that we are continuing to look and will continue to look at the, at the investments that are being made and certainly the investments that are proposed in FY twenty one to ensure that we are fully leveraging them based on a framework that has been presented this morning.
Mayor, Councilmember Harper Madison was next.
Councilmember Harper Madison?
Good morning, thank you. I think my questions are for both Director Hayden and Director Trulove. And I'll start with Director Trulove. So you said three point six million dollars in housing vouchers, twenty-two point five in rental housing development assistance. There's a hundred million dollars in the twenty eighteen Affordable Housing Bond, but thirty million of that is going to hotel acquisition. I don't know if you see where I'm going here, but that's a lot of numbers. I wonder if you could provide us something that has all those numbers compiled in some sort of comprehensive fashion? Because I think they'd be very helpful with answering some of the budget questions that our constituents are asking. Specifically, they're asking, how much are we putting towards XYZ, including housing being one of the main ones?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. And then I'm a little confused about how the RFQ process shook out. You said that there was an qualified application, in which case the management and operations is still open to where you can independently contract those services. I'm just trying to figure out what types of organizations provide that management and operations services? What are, what are we looking for?
So I think, you know, and this might be something that Vella might want to jump in on as well. in on as well, since it's more of a public health, with a public health solicitation. But you would look at some of the providers that are already doing permanent supportive housing, right? And so you can look at LifeWorks or Integral Care or agencies along those lines. You know, were, the the lack of response could be due to a number of things, could be due to the fact that there wasn't any funding associated with it. Remember, at the time, this was a different, when we started this process, it was pre-COVID. It was, you know, we were hearing from agencies out there that there was funding that they had and that they might be, that all they needed was space. And so when we actually came down to receiving the the responses to the solicitation, we're deep in the middle of pandemic response, and it's just a different game than when we started having the conversations about this. And so I think there are a number of factors at play. I I think we also need to consider, you know, simple things like trying to improve the capacity and bring more players into into the arena that can help provide these services in Austin. Because if we're talking about needing the number of units that we need in a permanent supportive housing space, we're probably going to see that our current providers are going to reach capacity before we have the number of units that we need. So.
I appreciate that. Because that was, that was a part of the motivation for my question. I was thinking if we didn't have the opportunity to be able to assess, you know, from a comprehensive list of providers, then it sounds to me like we might run into that problem where we just don't have the capacity. In which case, that gets me thinking, how do we build the capacity? What types of organizations can we help either, you know, make that transition into this space or, you know, just sort of help them adapt into being eligible for this kind of thing? So I certainly would like to see that conversation be expanded upon.
Absolutely, I agree.
Then, do. And so this question, it sounds like a public health question to me, but it may be multiple parties. I just keep, the more we have these kinds of presentations, which I really appreciate, they're very thorough and helpful in that, you know, I'm seeing where we're filling the gaps and I'm seeing, you know, how much effort is going into it and from the practical application, like what exactly do we need to get this done? But I'm also at every turn, and this is, you know, both with public safety and the conversation around homelessness, especially when we're talking diversion and prevention of homelessness, I just keep thinking, I guess, sort of like that building capacity and the provider space there, I I don't see where we're building capacity in treatment facilities for substance use disorder. I don't see where we're building capacity with intensive outpatient and inpatient and emergency mental health responses. And I'm just, I'm concerned that as we're shifting systems to more appropriately address need, that we don't have enough in the way of providers who address those needs, especially in a way that it's either affordable, low cost, no cost, citing scale. I, I'm just, I'm very worried that we're not going to be able to accommodate the need, even if on the front end, we're taking care of people's permanent supportive housing needs. And on the front end, we're addressing the need to, to be more thoughtful about how we deploy our public safety tools. Those are, those are tools that I don't hear us talking about, and I'm very worried that without having those conversations and frankly, putting some money towards reconciling what I see as a distinctive lack thereof, will just create another problem, another backlog of sorts. And I'm not sure who exactly can speak to that. One, I'd like for folks to just speak to it in general, but two, I'm asking, like, what are your recommendations for moving forward? How we do create a system where my colleagues and I are able to help build out those treatment facilities and for both substance use disorder and and mental health crisis and maintenance?
Stephanie, I don't know if you want to lead off with a response. I'd also ask Barb if she wanted to sort of jump in to talk a bit about what she's seen in other communities in terms of building capacity. And then I'll end with some of what we intend to do in terms of the framing now that we have from the work that's been done and how we can work with partners to move forward.
I got ditched, ACM splitter.
Stephanie, still on the line? If not, Vella, did you want to speak to this?
Good morning, Vella Carmen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My video tends to compromise my audio, so I thought I'd stick with the audio. Vella Carmen, Interim Homeless Services Officer for Austin Public Health. Certainly, mental and behavioral health is a huge need in our community. At one point in the last few years, Texas was either 49th or 50th in per capita spending in those areas. And and typically, we look to the state to help fund a lot of those types of services. And certainly, our partnership with Integral Care as the local mental health authority has been really critical around the area of homeless services as well, because they have not only operated as the mental health authority, but also have received grants and developed programs to incorporate housing and permanent supportive housing, et cetera. As Barb mentioned earlier, Medicaid reimbursement as a, as a key strategy for bringing funding to permanent supportive housing services, for example, is, is really a key strategy in other states. Here in Texas, we don't have expanded Medicaid, but we do work with Integral Care, who does have the ability to bill for Medicaid. And we have a current contract with them for Housing First, assertive community treatment services for permanent supportive housing. They are able to bill, last I checked, between 20 and 30% of their services were billable for reimbursement from Medicaid. And so that is a way that our investments from the city have been able to leverage that system. And so I think more of that would certainly be a key strategy. But you are, you are right in in questioning the capacity and the, and whether or not we have enough of those services in our community, because, because we don't, quite frankly.
I may be asking you to give me an imaginary number, but, you know, while we're having these conversations, I don't think it, it is to our detriment to dream big. What would that number look like for us to not be 49th in the nation in addressing mental and behavioral health? What would that investment look like?
Wow, yeah, I would really be making up a number there. But I'd certainly look into the the numbers that we have, the modeling that, that the consultants have done and and give you something better than, it would be completely a made up number at this point.
We do appreciate that very much, especially, you know, as we're deliberating amongst our colleagues and our offices around budget priorities.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And what I'll say to, just to wrap up, oh, Barb, go ahead, jump in.
I was just going to to point out that you're currently have excess spending related to healthcare, behavioral healthcare, and treatment services, if you're like every other community in America that doesn't have a robust permanent supportive housing strategy. Because what we know from the studies that have been done in every other community is that homeless people are cycling through those healthcare facilities, those treatment programs, and mental health and psychiatric treatment at a very high cost. The the reality is, it's very inefficient to do that. And in fact, by providing permanent supportive housing and investing in the operations and services that we showed in our modeling for the, for the down payment, those overall costs to your community would actually be reduced if you're similar to other cities that have done these type of cost benefit analysis. So one thing to think about is, rather than investing in standalone increases in substance abuse treatment or mental health services, is in fact to invest more strongly in permanent supportive housing so that the existing services that are available in your community can be more successful. Because the cost of providing treatment to someone who is stably housed is significantly less than the cost of having someone who is actively using substances and is cycling through treatment ineffectively. So I just want to put that context out there is to, to think really strategically about those investments. The numbers that Matt White showed you include the cost of providing a full permanent supportive housing benefit. And in other states, they've actually seen that be very effective. I do want to underscore the importance of a, of a, of an excellent, of moving your state to have a better overall mental health response. I'm not arguing against that, I'm very much arguing for that. And to have a better state Medicaid plan, and of course, Medicaid expansion, all of those are factors that overall reduce the inflow into homelessness, but also have been shown to be more effective. So I would encourage you to continue in that type of policy advocacy as well.
I'll just quickly say that this is the, this is the exact sort of, one of the more important objectives of the work that's been done over the last few months, and ensuring that we are not allocating funds to, to pro, to programs that are, again, very, very much needed, but that instead, we are looking at our system, understanding fully where the gaps exist, and then strategically allocating where funds can have the biggest and most benefit. So Barb, I'm glad you made the point that you made in that if we, this is the, one of the, again, objectives of the P3 group as well, for us to really look at our entire system, fully understand where the gaps are, and then strategically invest. And to Barb's point, that investment in permanent supportive housing helps us in many ways beyond the bid, the permanent supportive, supportive housing bids. And so, Councilmember, appreciate that question, and we will work to make sure that we can get a response to you regarding some of our partners that provide mental health and substance abuse services.
Councilmember Alter.
Good morning. I think this is a really important conversation. I appreciate the questions that my colleagues have asked. I want to piggyback on a couple of them to make sure that I'm understanding. So first, a comment, Councilmember Harper, Member Harper-Madison, unfortunately, the state of Texas is in the 40s on a whole lot of measures that would help to improve equity and improve quality of life. So for school funding for people, we're 43rd in the country. So there's a whole lot of areas where, as a state, we couldn't, could improve. For some of the numbers, I wanted to first drill down on what Councilmember Casar brought up in that, with the permanent supportive housing. And as I understand it, the numbers in the chart, that 14.5 is for the operating and maintenance. And I wanted to go back to conversations we had before when we had, were talking about the motel conversion. It's my understanding, if we could get those rooms to have their little kitchenettes, that Echo and other providers would be able to pull down annual funding for that. Is that true? Or is, you know, is this 14.5 something we have to do in the interim until that time happens? Or is this an ongoing expense? Because I thought there were, they may have been HUD funding or other things that, once we got to a certain point with motel conversion, that it was for permanent supportive housing rather than bridge housing, that we would be in the position to do that. So can someone please clarify that for me?
Sure, I, I'll, I know that, and I don't mean to put Rosie on the spot here, but I know that Rosie and ACM Gonzalez had a conversation with Echo earlier this week or late last week about, about that and about operating. And I don't know if you wanted to elaborate, Rosie, or if you were in a position to. And it's, if you're not, it's fine, but wanted to at least give you that opportunity.
Rodney, did you want to speak to that, or do you want me to?
If you would, Rosie, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, so we have had conversations with, with Echo about, you know, initially, we were in, in conversations with them for management and operation of the roadway end. Since we were able to acquire roadway with community development block grants rather than using the Affordable Housing Bonds, we're able to remain a little bit more flexible on the long term use of that facility. And the intention is to keep it as a protective lodge or transitional housing for the duration of COVID and beyond. Because it, to do the, to do the rehab and really renovation that would be necessary for that, to take it to the level that would, we would be able to utilize any federal dollars for, from vouchers or for, for anything along those lines, it would take it offline for use for about a year, and the expense would be, you know, upwards of, of a million and a half more dollars to invest into that facility, when we can use it in its current state with minor rehab for protective lodging or bridge housing or shelter, you know, more of a shelter type, type use. So we have talked to Echo about, you know, their potential willingness to, to manage and operate any future investments, and they're open to that. I think as we might have any dollars available, I think there's other folks that would still be open to that. And so we're thinking about how we would move forward on operation and maintenance for any facilities that come online through acquisition after roadway end.
So I think we have an executive session on this, but I just want to make it clear that I'm really going to need to understand that dynamic, because as I understood the selling point of the motel conversion and that approach was that the ongoing costs could be funded by federal dollars, and that would not be something that we would be taking on as a city. If that's not the case, then we're going to need, I'm going to need to really rethink the whole strategy and how we're thinking about it. And I'm not sure if you're prepared to give me those answers now, I'm happy to hear more. But I'm, I'm confused about the mixed messaging that I'm getting on that funding.
If I could clarify, Councilmember Alter, the proposal that Echo had provided, and I'd be glad to send that information back to council, was that they would initially take on the hotels as a bridge housing for a short duration and convert them within a two-year time period into permanent supportive housing that would be financially self sustaining through the charge of rent, if you will, to each individual tenant. And so that was Echo's proposal for long, long term sustaining each of those facilities as PSH. As Rosie pointed out, Echo is still interested in participating. We are utilizing the roadway for other purposes, but to, we spoke with Matt Malika yesterday, and they certainly are interested in continuing participating.
Okay, well, we can take that part offline unless there's more info.
Well, I was just going to say that in charging, when, when ACM Gonzalez speaks to charging of rent, that comes in the form of receipt of federal vouchers. And so folks, it would be sitting in there, and I think that may be where some information is getting, is getting maybe confused or not. Because if we were going to be able to receive federal vouchers or place people under a federal voucher, then that's what, there's certain criteria that have to be met for the facility. And that's why, when I speak about roadway needing additional rehab and, and the time and expense for that, that would be what would need to happen, to have that be available for someone to reside in there under a federal voucher. And needing that full voucher is what Echo was talking about with having that kind of become a, more of a self sustaining facility. But we know that there's a limited number of vouchers that are available in our, in our city. And so that's one of the reasons why we're looking to create that local housing voucher to help supplement that and to bolster that need in the, in the community.
Thank you. And then I had a question for the consultants. You spoke about public space management, and I hadn't heard that as an approach, you know, specifically, can you say a little bit more about that and what those strategies are for the inclusive public space management and how you've seen it done well? And how you've seen it done well?
Great. Thank you for that question. So public space management is this necessary approach because you have people living in public spaces because they really have nowhere else to go. And you're in a city that, as you know, has a very high rate of unsheltered homelessness. And so the strategies other cities are using is rather than the move along or sweep or you know, euphemisms like encampment resolution, things that intention just to move people along is instead ensuring that those public spaces are have regular trash pickup, that there is provision of helping them get their basic needs needs met, connection to resources. And and as I've seen on outreach teams and other communities that are doing this, the outreach teams are engaging individuals and trying to make connection to what resources might be available to them in the community, but also working with them to, you know, to get things like IDs and be connected back with family whenever possible. And so it is combining an effective street outreach strategy where the first response to homelessness is outreach, not not a police response. And and all of this, of course, is dependent on your ability to scale up both the permanent supportive housing that is needed, particularly for people experiencing chronic homelessness, but also expanding your emergency shelter capacity in ways that are low barrier and allow people with, as as we have seen in other cities, possessions, partners and pets are allowed to come into facilities and to be treated with dignity and respect and not subject to arbitrary rules or nighttime only kind of shelters. So those are the strategies that are effective in reducing that. Because what happens is when people are moved along and their belongings are are lost, they're losing IDs, they're being treated in often harsh ways that will make it harder and harder to engage them into the future. And so that's the you've got some of those strategies underway. They're not perhaps to the scale sufficient to ensure that every campsite is, you know, perhaps in good order, but those are the type of activities that make the the most difference.
So so I understand that as the ideal, but have you assessed what we're doing currently in this area and what we need to do differently more specifically? And are there particular cities that are good models if we're trying to understand this better?
Yes. No, that's a great question. So from what when when we were there and did our onsite, some of the things we noticed is there aren't a lot of places for people to go to during the day to access getting their basic needs met, whether that's laundry or showers or places to get mail delivered. The kind of things that you and I can do in our homes, access to those. You do have a trash pickup program. It's not clear if that is to scale. If you're getting public complaints about trash negotiated with with encampments, that's probably a good indicator that that program might need to get scaled up. I was, I don't know that it was that at every site there were safe needle exchange and disposal. Again, if you're hearing public complaints about syringes, that's going to tell you that there probably isn't a sufficiency to that response. As I had understood it from the conversations we had with across sector or across departmental team, they were working on an encampment resolution protocol. That encampment protocol needs to be grounded in the health of the individuals who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness, not simply related to the most calls that come in as which camp gets cleaned up and moved along. Because when you're doing that, it's more of a whack a mole response where people are appearing in other places. The cities that we profiled and visited that had the most effective responses included places with relatively low levels of unsheltered homelessness because they had enough a really effective response. And that was places like Syracuse, New York, and Rockford, Illinois, and Wichita, Kansas. We saw some effective practices happening in places with high levels of unsheltered Portland, Oregon, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Santa Barbara, California, where they had some elements of the public space management that I just described. There's a full series of briefs that we provided that and one of the briefs is on inclusive public space management. But we also profiled nine communities that had some or all of these elements going on. Also, I went out on outreach in many places in California, San Francisco, Los Angeles, the Coachella Valley. And usually the responses that I was seeing there just are not to scale in terms of providing the kind of relief that is needed. Because when people have no access to get their basic needs met, they're having to do all of their activities of daily living in the in the public space. And so it's really, really challenging for people living living outdoors and unsheltered. And so we could see in your community, you were doing some things, but it probably is not to the scale that's necessary, given some of the concerns we heard raised when we talked with people with who were living outside and just the challenges that they faced.
So that is that report is separate from the report on Austin. That's a report you did in conjunction with a particular foundation. Can somebody send us a link to that material if we want to learn more? Please. Thank you. I have a couple of other questions, but I will yield to other folks now.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Thank you. I'm really very interested in in this kind of the systems design part of these recommendations. There's going to be a lot of budget conversations and not just over the next two weeks, but as we all as a council work on continuing budget tweaks and changes moving forward. But I'm particularly interested in the relationship between the city and other other funding partners, both Travis County Healthcare District, private funders, and Echo, which I always understood to be the kind of managing agency, the continuum of care agency. And because it's the continuum of care agency, it occupies a very special place in terms of the ability for the government to contract with them directly without a complicated RFP system. Can can you very briefly review that part again? Because it wasn't clear whether or not the city was going to continue what it does now, which is still do separate contracts with separate providers? Or if we're going to use the continuum of care as the manager of the providers?
Barb, I don't know if you want to sort of just talk in summary about or in brief about the roles and responsibilities section of the report. Just an overview, and then we could be more directed in our in our engagement with the council members office with any other questions.
Okay, that sounds good. So in our recommendations, we we recognize that the city is the primary investor in homelessness. But it's making its investment decisions largely through its own processes and has a series of legacy contracts. What whereas Echo is only responsible for the continuum of care funding, which is a much smaller portion of the funding, they to date have had only limited responsibilities for the crisis response piece of it. Most of the the COC resources are for housing stabilization. But they have a comprehensive organization as required to receive the COC designation as the continual care lead. So they have a lot of expertise and capacity on their staff for everything from data through the coordinated entry system and the HMIS. And so there's this opportunity to reset the partnership between the city of Austin and Echo and to more clearly delegate responsibilities to Echo and empower them. And what that means is to signal to the providers who receive city of Austin funding that in fact, they are to participate as part of the Echo led system and that there is a process for joint and shared decision making across the city and Echo. Specifically of the four jigsaw puzzles that we talked about, the city is accountable for activities related to inflow and brokering all of those relationships that reduce inflow into homelessness as well as investment in affordable housing. As well as the city's the primary responsibility for public space management. They can delegate or you can delegate to Echo full responsibility for the homelessness assistance system, both the crisis response and the housing stabilization. And I I think the work you have underway through the COVID nineteen response kind of lays out some of the ways that you can do that. Our consultant recommendations to the city and to Echo, which we we had open conversations with everyone all around, is that the contracting process of the city to Echo, because you are funding them in some ways, is to get to a unified contract that is clear on their accountabilities and responsibilities and for partnering with them in the grant making decisions that the city of Austin is going to make. And so I think it's a to be developed into the future. It is conversations, as I said, that we can we can, there's goodwill on both on both parts. And we're really pleased to see the progress that Echo and the city have been making together through the COVID response in some of this type of shared decision making.
So that 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 helps a little bit. So it sounds like the city owning the inflow process might be a might be an area where we're working with workforce solutions to address challenges around inflow, folks who are who have their income disrupted. Maybe, you know, the tenants council, there might be other entities out there that might be our partners on the inflow side. And then Echo is our primary partner on the assistance on the homeless assistance side. That makes a lot of sense. I still want to have more conversations later about who's doing the contracting. And and to the extent that the council can be setting the policy and doing oversight. But but I remain concerned about the contracts coming through the city because the combination of the requirements around the contracting process and the inevitable politicize politi politisize, I say, not going to say it right. Politics gets involved. I'll just say it that way. That is inevitable in the contract decision. We've we've all seen that happen for good and for bad on that. And so my preference is that we, as a council, as a city, not just us, but moving forward, that we're setting policy and measuring outcomes, but we're letting the providers be more nimble, do more matching funds, being more establishing more partnerships you know, with with these other funding agencies. But I I think I better understand that separation, but I definitely want to talk more about it.
Councilmember Kitchen.
I appreciate all my colleagues' questions. These are these are really good questions. So and I appreciate the work that the consultants have done and our staff has done. This is very helpful. I want to ask about it's sort of a next steps question. I'm I'm concerned about getting to a place where we actually have metrics that we are monitoring. Dashboard concept that we have used for other other activities, as well as an implementation plan. Because it's very helpful, but I'm I'm really wanting to understand specifically how we're making progress on or how, you know, and I haven't seen any data that the overall data is helpful in terms of number of people on the street. But what I'm not seeing is is enough specifics to understand how we're actually being successful or not in terms of the use of our dollars and how we're avoiding. You know, how we're avoiding a flap, you know, I mean, there's a lot there to unpack and talk about. You know, in a simplified world, and we I know it doesn't work this way, but some would just ask, you know, we have two thousand plus people. Why why haven't we just assigned each one a single case manager to help them get to where they need instead of all the, you know, all the overlap and stuff that goes on that's not coordinated. So anyway, but that's a longer conversation. Let me get back to what is next steps in terms of an implementation plan of identifying metrics that we are using for our performance on our contracts and a dashboard that we can actually see the progress that we're making, and we can show the progress to the community in terms of our use of our dollars.
Thank you for that, council member. I'm going to ask Matthew Doherty to jump in to talk a bit more about the P three coalition, and then I'll ask Laura Foss to jump in to talk a bit about the dashboard timeline.
Great. So I think we are now at the critical stage of figuring out the responsibility for moving these recommendations forward in this report as well as looking back to the Austin Echo point. I'm sorry, the Aston action plan developed by Echo, which didn't really have clear implementation strategies or also responsibilities either. So that is part of the process that's going to be happening alongside the P three work that I described is also just looking across the full range of recommendations within this report. Clearly zeroing in on which are recommendations that the city carries responsibility for making changes around alone. Where are the ones that there are shared responsibilities with Echo? Where are there ones that really the P three group can carry the the work forward? And getting to clarity around all of the full scale of the recommendations and the responsibility for driving the next step. So we're not quite there yet. That's a key element of the work that's to follow. And within that, to circle back a little bit, also alongside the P three process, there'll be more conversation between the city and Echo that I'll be trying to facilitate to really hammer out some of the details around roles and responsibilities. And that is work that I think we would have done several months ago if it weren't for COVID nineteen, but primarily we were negotiating those roles and responsibilities within the context of COVID nineteen. Now I think we have the ability to have the conversations about the overarching system and be getting to greater clarity about how those roles are shared, divvied up, where is their collaboration, where is their independent action? And then as part of that, we're also going to be setting clear targets for some of the the scale increases. And then and Matt White could probably speak to this in more detail. But there are also clear system performance measures that HUD uses and encourages communities to use to measure the impact of their strategies. And they're relatively simple measures around documenting the whether you're seeing increase or decreases in people entering homelessness, whether you're seeing longer or shorter experiences of homelessness, people exiting to permanent housing into other settings. And I think you can use those measures as a primary focus for knowing whether your community is moving forward in ways that are leading to successful outcomes. Or whether there's more more work needed across some of those measures to drive more progress.
So so just so we're talking about, so when we when I talk about implementation plan, I just want to double check that this is what you all are thinking. You know, but it sounds like it might be. I'm talking about, you know, deadlines, responsibilities for task and results that we're looking for, you know, what has to be done, when, who's doing it, and and what tells us results? We at that level of specificity. So to mean when you're talking about an implementation plan?
Yes, I think it may that may work may have to happen in stages since there's a lot of work to be done, but zero in on the priorities, get the clarity around responsible, what timeframes, what activities are they implementing, being able to to have that more clearly understood across all the partners who have roles to play. I think that's one of the areas in which you struggle currently is people know need that things need to happen, but it's not clear who's supposed to take lead on making sure they happen. First, in the context of the P three work and getting the clarity around the work of that team and its roles and responsibilities and the roles and responsibilities of the members. And at the same time, we're hammering out kind of the bigger picture vision for the roles and responsibilities of the city. And then building towards an implementation plan that could be applied to the action plan as a whole. But seeing that between now and the end of September, we're probably laying the groundwork for that, but not getting to that full scale implementation plan. It's the whole action plan by that stage.
Okay, one one last question then. So on the P three, I see that we're we have social service providers so far, and I know you mentioned that you were perhaps building it out. But I'm not seeing the healthcare entities on that list other than integral care. But I don't see the hospital systems or central health. And the reason I'm thinking that might be useful is because at at its heart, homelessness is a is a housing issue, but it's also very much a health issue. And because it's so intertwined and that combined with the fact that discharging to the street still happens. I mean, I know that health systems try not to do that, but it but it does happen quite. And so I I don't want that that our healthcare system in the community to be what appears to be somewhat siloed in terms of working together as a community. So is that something, are you thinking that that So is that something, are you thinking that that, that the conversations with them come as part of P3, or is there a different mechanism for engaging them?
I think it could. So I think the vision for the P3 group is to start with a small core group who really are very focused on homelessness as the core element of their business and working with them to hammer out the priorities, next steps, where they, where they want to dedicate their time and effort. And, but it includes work across inflow, so hospital system discharge policies might be an area in which work gets prioritized, includes across all of the elements that Barb has described. And then I think building out who are the partners that we need to be working with in order to deliver on those goals. And so that's where I think some of the systems may not be best positioned to be in the overarching strategy conversation, or might be core members of some of the work groups that drive specific elements of that work forward. I think the bigger the group gets, the harder it is to keep everybody on the same page and for them all to have a shared understanding. So I think starting smaller, getting a clear vision, set a direction for that group, and then bringing people into something that feels more defined, rather than bringing people into something that's a little bit amorphous right at this stage, but should get more defined pretty quickly.
Okay, well, I would just suggest that, as you think through that, that there's, there's more and more, and it's becoming common, as I'm sure you know, in the healthcare field, to, to the social determinants of health, which housing and homelessness is a key part as part and healthcare response, not as a add-on. So you might think about just central health into the picture because they're, you know, just like you've brought in integral care, is integral ability, and central health has the physical health responsibility for the whole community. And so you might, I would just suggest that, I, I get what you're saying in terms of bringing in too many players, but you might, you might consider bringing them in at the beginning.
You can definitely talk about that with the group at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, our, our healthcare system be on the outside of, I know you don't come out on the outside, but they're not an add-on. It is, it is like this. And so then the last thing is, when can we, and this may be, I don't know if this is for order or not, but when can we expect to see an implementation plan?
Well, as, thank you, councilmember, as Matt Doherty mentioned, we'll be working over the next few weeks through September to make sure that we have a, a solid and concise P3 coalition plan. I think primarily that plan will give us, as a coalition, what we need to have actionable steps to move forward. I think beyond and will, and into the first quarter of the, of the, of the FY21 budget, we look to hopefully within the first quarter have clear steps where we analyze action planning and homelessness, the recommendations that have been finalized and put forward by Barb Poppy and her team, and the work that Matt Doherty is doing, so that we can present forward to Mayor and to you as council, what we believe we need to do in terms of implementation to move forward in a systems, in a systems approach. I know we are, we are close to our time. I don't know if you wanted me to have Laura jump in quickly to talk about the dashboard, but I also know that we are scheduled to, to go into executive session now, so wanted to just check in on, on that. You're muted, Mayor.
Why don't you go ahead and just touch on the bash, dashboard, because I think that is kind of the, the next step and important. And then it is noon, so after that, I'll take a seat in the executive session.
Good morning, Mary and council. Just checking to make sure you guys can hear me. Perfect. Member Kitchen, thank you so much for your questions. Very briefly, a timeline on the dashboard. I'm delighted to tell you that we are planning to launch the first iteration of the dashboard one week from yesterday. So August 10th, you'll be getting a news flash that will provide you a link to the dashboard. As we met with each of your offices to, to gather information about what you would like to see in the dashboard, I'm happy to once again meet with each of your offices to walk through the dashboard, let you know how we landed on the data sets that we landed on for this first iteration, and the visualizations that you chose. I'd be delighted to do that. I can reach out to your offices and, and set up a time to do that if you're interested. But just again, quickly, look out for a news flash on August 10th, next Monday.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ellis?
I do have a question, but it's about a, a later item on our agenda, so I don't know if, I'd like to speak briefly before executive session, but if there's anything else on this particular topic, I'll let someone else go first.
No, I think there were no other hands raised, so you, you want to pick on something other than homelessness?
Yes, I just wanted to briefly say something about a later item on our, on our posting.
Let me let you go ahead and then just a second. City Matter Short, thank you so much, and all the consultants for, for being with us today. Excited to see this progress. Obviously a huge priority, and I know that so many in the community are, are with us but want to know that we have a plan and that we're going to, to be actually getting us closer to ending homelessness in the city is a really important step. Thank you. Thank you, Manager. All right, Councilmember Ellis, before we go into executive session?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to kind of get ahead of our agenda for this item, but I've, I've gotten a couple of concerns about the posting language and the, talking about active transportation for the last 30 minutes of today's meeting. So I just wanted to confirm that we're appropriately posted because I've heard some community members saying they were a little caught off guard because they weren't sure that we'd be talking about it and, and hadn't quite seen the information that was requested in the resolution. So I wanted to make sure we were not going to talk about anything that we weren't appropriately posted for.
Anne?
We're, we're posted to talk about the proposed budget and the tax rate. So it's very broadly posted.
Okay, and we think that active transportation, the way that Resolution 90 was, was written was covered under the, the budget and the tax rate, even though it ended up being a bond proposition?
Let me take a look at that. Is that part of the agenda?
Shown on the agenda that Ed handed out this morning, it's the discussion of active transportation investments per that resolution from 4:30 to 5:00.
Yeah, councilmember, we'll, we'll, but because it relates to the tax rate, we'll, we'll make sure that we have that prepared before we bring it forward.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, colleagues.